I'm just going to turn it over to you, Mr. Fairland.
Sure. Is the hearing open?
I'm about to open it, yeah. So I'm now hereby opening this hearing of the Rhinebeck Central School District, Board of Education. This is a hearing on the proposed budget for the 2014-15 school year, and I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Joe Fairland.
Okay, thank you, Deidre. Just for the record, nothing has changed since the last time we had this discussion on April 8th, when the Board adopted a budget to bring to the voters for their consideration. Everything is -- did you agree? Yeah, nothing changed. We had a state budget going into that meeting a little more than a month ago, and all of these figures that we have tonight that will be mailed out to every postal mailbox and post office box has that exact same information, at least in terms of the numbers, in terms of the budget itself. So perhaps we could start with this. I'll pass some of these around this table, and if there are people in the audience that might want to have one.
Joe, when can people expect to get the budget for sure?
Yeah, the budget brochure was brought to the post offices today, so most people ought to get them tomorrow or the next day at the latest. Yeah, it's already out in the post offices as of earlier today. Meg spent the better part of her day doing was driving from post office to post office. Anyway, what you have in front of you is a three-part budget summary. For many of you, even some of you on the Board, you haven't seen the budget arrayed in this way because we haven't presented it to you in this way prior to this evening. The numbers haven't changed, but they've been grouped differently. The state, in their wisdom, requires us to account for our spending using one budget format and to present the budget to the public in a different format. Go figure. So, because this is the official, state-mandated budget hearing, we use the format that the state requires. In the budget brochure, that's -- people will get in their mailboxes tomorrow or the next day, this is the format that we use because that's the format we're required to use. And essentially, what the state requires us to do is to take all the expenditures that are involved in administering the school district and put it in the administrative budget. And Tom can correct me at any point if I misspeak, so don't hesitate to jump in. That's part one of the document you have in front of you. Part two is the program budget, and that's where the state requires us to collect all of the various line items in the budget that support program, which includes, you know, for example, teacher salaries. That's part of the program budget. And then part three is the capital budget, and that's where we're required to gather all of the expenditures that support the day-to-day operation of the physical plant, maintenance, benefits, debt service, those kinds of things. So just to give that sheet a quick once-over, the increase in the budget, if you go down to the bottom, the total budget line is $567,616, which is a 1.87% increase over last year's budget. That's just the spending side of the budget. There are two sides to the budget: expenditures and revenues. This is just the expenditure side of the budget. So it's up 1.87% over last year's budget. Just as a reminder from our last meeting, our tax levy limit, or our budget cap limit, is 1.88%, and it just so happens that our tax levy to support this budget of a 1.87% spending increase is also a 1.87% levy increase. Correct?
Correct.
And it's our tax levy that we have to keep below the tax levy cap. So we are just below the tax levy cap. You can see how it breaks down, and we put in the percent change in each of those parts. This budget is 7.86% higher in the administrative expenditures, which includes, for example, like building principal salaries for all the program areas that goes in administrative. So that's one reason that's a little bigger than -- yeah. The program budget is up 1.04% over the last year's -- the current year's program budget, and the capital budget is up 0.87% above the capital budget for the current year's budget, 2013-14 budget. This is the budget for 2014-15. We went through -- if there are any questions on that?
Could you just, you know, because this is obviously a budget that we, you know, went through quite carefully in the past, but in this new breakdown, if you could just reiterate or just speak a little bit more to the increase in the administrative piece of the budget, which I think is where most members of the public might have questions.
Tom, can you take that one?
There is four major areas in the administrative budget that have increased the budget. The first one being under the finance component. This is the additional personnel assistant that was hired, plus some additional monies for, you know, various operations. But a bulk of that is going to be the personnel assistant. When we look in central services, the bulk of that increase is the additional computer technician. And if we go two lines down, we have curriculum development, really the major driver in this one. Even though you would think it's program, it's not. It's curriculum because we increased the -- we're having like the double the size of the curricular budget for additional summer curriculum writing. So that's a major piece of that particular piece. And then below, the other one being employee benefits. And that's just a matter of increases to the teacher retirement system, ERS, the employee retirement system, health insurance, and the various employee benefits. And you'll see that in each one of these sections.
Right.
In the part two, program area, you'll see a couple of big negatives, and that really is going to be from the breakage on the retiring teachers. Also, in the programs for students with disabilities, a decrease is also associated with students who aged out of our program. The elimination of our adult education. We haven't been running it for a couple of years, but we just eliminated it from the budget. So that was no mistake that we didn't budget on the revenue side, nor did we budget on the expenditure side for that one. And other than that, the other big decrease in here is in pupil transportation. We rebid the services, they're just staying with Durham busing, but with the new rates and the way that the bid was structured, we were able to produce some savings out of that particular bid. And then, of course, the real, real big one is the employee benefits, and that just once again is, if you look at your over -- the last one, you're looking at about an 8% overall increase to benefits, employee benefits, between social security, teacher retirement system, employees, and health insurance. That was the other one. And then the next part, we don't see that much of an increase in the capital budget. There's a slight decrease in the operation of plant. That's mainly due -- Sheldon's budget's pretty much stayed the same, but we did see some savings due to one retirement. Increases to the employee benefits, once again, across the board, a little bit less because the employee retirement system was nowhere as large as the previous year. And then debt service has gone down. We refinanced. We saw the big decrease -- let's say huge, but we saw about a $60,000 decrease last year. That's just already folded right into the numbers.
Right.
And we're seeing that savings every year, but really only recognize it the first year.
Right.
Even though we're going to be saving money year after year, unfortunately, you really only show the savings the first year.
Right, right, sure. Diane?
Tom, also in part in the first part, would our new technology director be part of that increase?
He was already budgeted the year before.
That was the year before, okay.
That was the budget.
We hired him this year, so that's not an increase.
Well, thanks for those, highlighting those, because it is, when you see it in the brochure, and this is how it will look in the brochure, and then when it's packaged that way, if people have questions over the next week from people in the community, then we can know exactly where each of those pieces fit.
If you want to, it's something that maybe we could discuss in communications because we can change it. This is our brochure that's going out. We can look to make changes to it to include more in-depth descriptions if you want.
Right.
That way, you know, just the big highlights, not the little stuff.
Right, right.
What positions we have.
Right, sure.
But we can talk about that in communication. That's something we should start in September talking about.
Yeah, okay.
In the fall.
Right. Thank you.
Just in terms of the, I think we'll just hang on to this, in terms of the process, we started this process back in, actually in December, when we brought to the Board a list of possible considerations for inclusion in the budget. In January, we provided the Board with a rollover budget, and that rollover budget was just taking everything and rolling it over to what it would look like for the coming year: no additions, no deletions, just taking it and rolling it over. And that rollover budget was a 3.95% increase. And then we worked through a series of, I think it was six drafts, wasn't it?
We got to five.
Five drafts, okay. So we started at 3.95%, and we made adjustments, both pluses and minuses, throughout the following several months, and took the budget from down to a 3.29% increase, down to a 2.78% -- no, sorry, down to a 2.13% increase, down to a 1.91 -- excuse me, a 2.06% increase. The next draft budget was a 1.46% increase.
47.
Yep, and then the final set of adjustments brought it up to 1.87%, which is where we are now. So that's kind of the history over the last four, five months for where we started and how we got to where we got. And that's what the process involves, is a series of additions and deletions as numbers firm up. We plug the new numbers in. Hopefully, they go down, but sometimes they go up, and kind of the interplay between those things gets us to where we wind up at this point in time. As Tom mentioned, one of the big benefits this year was a considerable number of people retiring, and the money that the district saves by having somebody with, say, 30 or 35 years' experience retire, and they're being paid up towards the top of the salary schedule, given their longevity in the district. And typically, we would hire somebody that's towards the lower end of the salary schedule, so there's a savings there. That helps us to maintain, and in some cases to increase or enhance various programs. So that's what we'd like to see come out of the process. Tom, just want to talk through the revenue side of the budget.
There wasn't much movement on the revenue side. Did talk a little bit earlier about continuing education. We eliminated that from the budget. We did have a revenue side to that, but if we're going to reduce the expenditure side, we'd also need to take that out on the revenue side.
The town is running a little bit of what's left to that program.
The town is running the bits of those programs. Interest in earnings, as you know, aren't getting any better at this time. They're pretty stagnant, so I increased it a little bit, about $10,000. Hopefully, at some point, we will start to see that turn around. Other revenue sources really did not change, but if we go to the second page, this is what we did.
They probably don't have that.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that. It's state aid. State aid, budget to budget, is up 3.4%. Overall, it showed a 3%, but in reality, looking at last year's budget to this year, it's an increase of 3.4%. And we, the Finance Committee, decided not to add any additional fund balance this year. We're keeping at the $1.15 million, as we did last year. We felt as though it wasn't prudent at this time. The budgets are getting closer to budget to actual expenditures, and so it's, until we get through this first year, just to see where we are, I would recommend that we didn't. We didn't. Just to let the Board know is that, you know, before you do set the rates, one of the things that the Board has, could do, if you're over the 4%, which you're not going to be, you're not going to be over the 4%, but just to let you know for future reference, if you go over the 4%, you can allocate some of those funds to reduce the taxes.
When you set the rates during the summer.
When you set the rates in the summer. So what you have here on the revenue side, remember, when you're going to vote, you're voting for the expenditures. You're not voting for the revenues. The revenues, you can change and modify before you do the tax levy. So just to let you know, that is a way of, if you ever come up with too much fund balance, don't know what to do with it, you can give it back immediately or save it to give back at some point. At one point, you are giving the money back, it's just a matter of when that is.
Right.
But as we look at the property taxes, we're seeing a 1.87%, which is 85% of our revenues come from taxes. It's a sad reality, but that's where we're at, 85%. It's a bulk, it's a bulk of where we get our monies from. But we're under the tax gap by a little over $2,700, so we're looking at 1.87%. Plus, with the legislation that was enacted with passing of the budget, homeowners who have star less than $500,000 should be receiving a check this fall, say, late October, to wait and see where that goes, but you should be getting a check for the increase in your taxes. Now, basically, it's just going to look at last year, multiply that factor. It is going to take into effect changes that may have occurred over the past few months. So you'll get a good approximation of whatever increase you see in your tax bill. Theoretically, you're going to get a check from New York State late October, early November, refunding you that increase. It's not going to be exact. It's not going to happen that way. It's not going to be exact, but anybody who had star last year will get this refund check because we are under the cap. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So that's, again, that's really an overview of where we're at. A couple of other things to mention. Another important thing that will happen at the budget vote a week from this evening is that there will be an election to fill two seats on the Board for three-year terms, starting this July 1st, and going for three years. There is one candidate who happens to be a sitting Board member, Deidre Burns, who turned in a duly constituted petition by the deadline for turning in a petition for a Board seat. So there are two Board seats, one candidate with a valid petition. That means that the other seat will be filled either through a write-in vote, or if there isn't a write-in candidate, through a variety of means, either the Board appointing somebody or another election. There are several ways to go to fill a Board seat. The last time we had a vacancy on the Board, the Board filled it with an appointee for the remainder of that year's term, and then it was on the following budget vote to fill that. So far, two individuals have provided us with written documentation that they are writing, they are running as write-in candidates, and those two individuals would be David Tobias and Richard Walker. So either one of those two individuals, or anybody else for that matter, could be written in. You don't have to be a declared write-in candidate, but these two individuals have contacted us and let us know that their intention is to run as a write-in, and as a result of that official declaration, we have provided them with some opportunities, and actually, we provided the voters with some opportunities to get information about their biographical information. We'll make that available on our website, and we've made that available for one individual who notified us before our budget brochure went to print. That's in the budget brochure. But you don't have to be a declared write-in candidate to run as a write-in candidate. That's not a requirement. So, did I leave anything out that I was supposed to say? I don't know that I did. If there are any comments that people need to make, even though unfortunately, we're way past the point of being able to change the budget that goes before the taxpayers, which is why we have our own budget hearing about five weeks ago, this is still available for any member of the public to comment.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, then I will close this hearing, and we will take just a couple of minutes and then reconvene for our regular Board meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it's Tuesday, May 13, 2014, and I'm opening up this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 22, 2014, regular meeting?
Subdued.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any comments or changes? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment. Would any member of the public like to comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to reports and discussion. We have some Board Committee reports, and the first one in your packet. And by the way, we're working off the agenda that's at your place. The first report is curriculum.
Yep, that's me. So we spent a fair amount of our meeting speaking with Brett King about differentiated learning and balanced literacy, in particular in the elementary school. And as we all know, the faculty's been working very hard for the last two years to align our literacy program with the new Common Core standards, but keeping in mind the balanced literacy approach. The goal is for every class at Chancellor to use the workshop model, which is based on 20 minutes of whole-class instruction and 25 minutes broken into small reading groups and discussion groups for targeted instruction from the teacher, and some more face-to-face time and differentiation there. It's a, can be a difficult model, but it is the goal for all of our classes at Chancellor. As a result of the initial concerns brought by some parents in the elementary school, Brett did report that regular meetings have been set up with the parents, and they seem to be coming to the end and being, you know, everybody's satisfied with the outcome. Marvin and Brett are going to be talking more with the Aussie consultant to address the issue of consistency of approach in each classroom at each grade level, and hopefully to use the consultant more with the teachers to work on collaborative work by grade level. We then turned to the question of the delayed school start time for the middle school and high school, and Joe gave us some historical context about that. This issue was brought up in about 2000, and then again in 2005, and there was a meeting in the middle school cafeteria where there were more attendees against this idea than for, but the district went through the exercise of discovering solutions and problems with a delayed start time, and that's where it was left. It seemed as though there were many more conflicts if we were the lone school that went off and changed our start time than benefits. But on a side note, Joe reported that he and some of the superintendents in the county had started taking up this issue, probably based on that New York Times article that appeared on the front page. So he is going to report back as they have further discussions about whether or not that's an idea we want to move forward with. We checked in with Marvin about the district's extended response for science, math, and the Common Core grant that is being written for the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. Marvin's reviewing the details, and he and Brett are trying to come up with ways that this kind of work doesn't any longer run parallel to the curriculum development, but it becomes a part of it. The formula with Rick Campbell has really been great, as we heard from the teachers that came to our Board meeting a few months ago. And this grant actually includes 16 teachers across most grade levels, specials, AIS and AIS classes. So Brett is really excited about that. We touched a little bit on summer grant work and talked a bit about how we award summer grants, and Joe described how he is responsible for reviewing each of those grants, and we are pleased at the number of teachers that have come forth with requests for summer grant work. We also spoke a little bit about foreign language, to see what the long-range plan for that is, and it all gets wrapped into conversation about technology integration at the middle school and how that changes the master schedule. So perhaps within two years or so, we can take on that discussion again more earnestly. So for May, we're going to, we're talking about Marvin's Curriculum Governance Council. We're going to be reviewing the wellness and health curriculum. And in June, we're inviting Dave Aristoc, who is the lead on the Wellness Committee, to talk to us about programs that they've been investigating.
Any questions for curriculum? I just have one. So in the May agenda, you also have developmentally inappropriate curricula. I assume that's in response to concerns the parents raised at
At the Coffey.
One of the Coffees, right? Particularly about reading levels and
That's right.
The Common Core's influencing that as sort of, you know, okay.
And, yeah, we're keeping it on there just so that we don't lose sight of that conversation as things come up.
Great.
Can I just add one thing as a fellow member of the committee? Something that sort of emerged from all of our conversations, which have unfolded now over a series of months in response to those questions that came forward about the approach to reading in kindergarten, is that the real thoroughness and amount of time that was devoted, not just, you know, in this little group of people, but at the level of administration and teachers, all who were concerned, and Marvin and teachers, all who were concerned, and Marvin kind of reported to us about how extensive that conversation has been. So really wanted to call that out as a robust response.
Right. No, it's very good to hear that because we did, you know, and that was the purpose of these coffees, hear some from parents and kind of set up those avenues for communication. So thanks for your work in helping also facilitate that. Great. We'll move on to audit committee minutes, and that's Laura again.
I'm on deck tonight.
So we, Tom had reached out to our internal auditor about the focused audits that we discussed at our last meeting, specifically the extra classroom fund and the food service. For the extra classroom fund, the auditor is going to create a checklist of procedures that we will have for the treasurer from June till July, so that we know exactly when things are supposed to happen, nothing falls through the cracks, and there are plenty of checks and balances built in. We've also asked them to provide a narrative outlining best practices for the extra classroom fund and how those funds are handled from the outset. In the food service, we are asking them to look at our point-of-sale system and see how we're utilizing the reports that we are generating from that system, and to determine if there are additional methods and reports that we should be outputting for tracking and all, any other manner of information. The inventory tracking system is also going to be developed with Tom and the food service folks. And we've also asked that in addition to that, they review our progress as they outlined back in June of last year for the major focused audit of the food service program, see how we're doing on forward progress there. They'll be doing that work at the end of this month and into June, and they'll run both audits simultaneously. Tom also reported that our cooperative bid group, which is five schools in the county, have had some personnel changes, so he's looking at the possibility of partnering with Red Hook moving forward for our purchasing power. The external auditor, good news, has filed our federal report, and all is well.
There is a change. He is doing some preliminary work. He had mentioned he wasn't. He has come to do some of it. So we kind of asked him to do some of it, get it out of the way, and not be a burden that week that they are here.
Very good. Any questions for audit? Well, thank you, Laura. Once again.
Once again.
You had a busy month. I think you're off in June for taking minutes.
Yeah, I'm not doing minutes next time.
So off to communications we go. We talked a little bit about the Board of Ed election information. As Joe described, there is some information in the newsletter, but we talked about, in the future, the committee recommending providing the community with more information upfront about the number of seats being voted on for each year's election. It's not our responsibility to recruit candidates, but it is certainly our responsibility to provide information about the process and generate interest in board service. So Joe suggested that we incorporate it in our budget development calendar, which seems like a great idea to us, and we can start the discussions in February in our open sessions. We will, on voting day, provide information in the polling room about how to do a write-in candidate, but obviously, we're not going to be putting, you know, endorsing any particular person for office.
One thing just to mention that, to tag along with that, Meg has done some research into that, maybe even Mary Ann is aware, but apparently, we are able to place the biographical information on write-in candidates, and certainly Deirdre's biographical information, as we've collected it on a table in the hallway. It can't be in the cafeteria where the voting machines are, but we can provide it outside in the hallway, so somebody who walks in cold can look, if they won't take the time, they can look at that.
And that's for the declared candidates only?
No.
For any?
No, write-ins too. I mean, anybody.
Well, I meant the...
Anyone who lets us know. Obviously, if you don't let us know, we can't collect your stuff, much less put it out there.
Is there only ones, can people only write in one candidate, or because there's two seats open, they can...
Yeah, I mean, even in, they could write in both. Even in a quote-unquote "normal" year, where you have two or more candidates who have submitted petitions, there must be a place to do a write-in for both of those seats, whether you have declared write-in candidates or not. So yes, you could, somebody could write in two write-ins if they wished, and you could always do that.
And we always do get write-ins.
Yeah.
Yeah, handful.
You have a question, though. Also, just for clarity, they can have their information there, available.
We can have their information there. Because it's standardized and...
Okay, so we have to put it out there. They can't be politicking on school grads, so that can't happen.
Absolutely not. That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Oh, that may be different than general letters.
Yep, that's correct. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, then we moved on to parents who've left the district for other schooling options. Steve is finishing up his phone interviews. There have been a number of people who haven't called him back, so probably don't want to participate in our fact-finding mission, but he's finishing up the last couple, and there doesn't seem to be anything thematic about why these families have chosen other options, but we're going to keep our eyes on it now, moving forward every year, and see if anything comes up. He's now turning to the families who've pulled their kids out and then returned to the district. He's going to look K through 12 to see how many students that is, and we'll probably send a letter to these families, asking them to participate in, you know, a fact-finding, information-sharing moment where they can tell us what their experience was when they left the district, why they left, what their experiences were out there, and why they came back. So I think that'll be instructive in helping us understand that. Then we moved on to the website and our general communications plan. Steve's been working, reviewing school world about capabilities for creating more active and dynamic website. He's also recruiting input from the high school kids who will potentially be the Gen S program that's scheduled for next year. The committee is recommending a review and revision of the district mission core value statements before we do any web relaunch or major revision. The website, we want to be the brand for the district, and so everything's going to have to hang on those statements and point back to those statements. And from there, hopefully, we'll be able to generate a sort of a strategic plan, long-range strategic plan for the district, so that we always have a goal to work towards. We also talked about finding ways to streamline the information that gets posted onto the website and various other sources. There are lots of places for stakeholders to get information, not always a centralized way of getting that information, so we want to try to come up with strong processes that will help streamline that process. Joe, at the end of our meeting, touched upon bringing together some understanding and transparency to parent-teacher communications, and that will be the focus of our June meeting. Hopefully, we can create some appropriate avenues for constructive communications.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for communications? Diane.
What grade levels and what years is Steve tracking down for transfers?
For the ones who've left and not come back? For the new, having left and come back, he's going to do K-12 for the last year or two.
He's going to see how many is involved.
I guess, yes. But the initial group of people who've just left was over a period of five years.
Yeah, didn't he just focus on like five through eight or something like that? I think so.
Any other questions, or did you have another comment? I'll just say, you know, it's obviously for larger discussion with the issue related to like website improvements to the website, which we all know we have to make, and, you know, I'm always, I know we all are struck when the principals do their reports, there's so much great information, great things that happen in our school district, and we're really not using our website to communicate them that well. But I'll just put out there, I know it says here, "The committee is recommending a review and revision of the district mission, vision, and core value before proceeding with any website relaunch." I would just be concerned that'll just delay, you know, what are sort of some technical things that need to get done. I realize there's a lot of questions about the right website and a lot of discussion about that, but I'll just put out there then, I'm concerned that our revision, looking at our whole mission, vision, and core value statement can take six months, and everything can just push that back, so that just, as we move forward, that's just my concern about that.
You're absolutely right, and I think in the committee, we've talked about adding more information to the website even before we do this review of the mission, et cetera. We do need to have more functionality on the website regardless of whether we stay the same or move forward or completely redo. So yes, we're definitely talking about all those celebratory things that we should be highlighting.
Great. All right, and thank you, Laura, for all of those minutes. We move on now to policy. And Diane Lyons, you're up for policy.
We only have one report, Diane. So, Policy Committee, we first took up two potential policies that we've been looking at. The first one is staff complaint grievances. We're just, Joe's going to be giving some information back from legal counsel for us. The second one is the meal charging policy. So Tom joined our meeting to give us some information about this, and he told us that roughly $3,000 each year is not paid by parents for students' meals. He gave us some information on, you know, the process, on what happens if kids, you know, there's a negative balance. You know, at some point, our social workers will get involved to see if the parents maybe need free and reduced if they have to fill out paperwork, or what would happen there. Tom is going to look into what other school districts are doing, the policies they may have, but the committee is still kind of struggling on, you know, what kind of policy to have and to make sure that, you know, every child still gets a meal, you know, but looking at, you know, what the right thing is. We want to have a policy that's enforceable, but trying to look at what that is going forward. So we're still working on that, and if anyone has any feedback, we're happy to hear that. When we continued on the review of our policies, as we've been doing all year, we have a few that have rewrites that Joe's working on, and then the committee's going to tackle one that needs a little bit more input and work. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the Policy Committee? All right. Thank you. Very good. I'm also just going to take this time to just report a little bit from the last CDEP meeting, which was last week, and Joe and I both attended that. A big portion of that meeting was Steve Jensen presenting the, his technology report that we had received at the board level. As well, within that context, we talked about that a new technology plan will be brought to the board over the summer for approval after thorough review and endorsement by the technology vertical team. We had a very good and vibrant discussion about whether we're meeting appropriately the needs of students who are not academically high-achieving, students who attend BOSEs, whether BOSEs is adequately meeting our needs and the needs of our students, and students who maybe not headed off to four-year colleges. So that's an ongoing discussion that I think, you know, needs to come to the board level at some point, but it was a positive conversation. And then we did talk about restructuring of curriculum governance, which I know the curriculum committee discussed some of in terms of the Curriculum Governance Council, what would that look like, how that interfaces with school-based strategic planning teams and curriculum planning teams, and how CDEP will then have oversight of that. So Marvin is reworking that after discussions at the CDEP table, and I know we'll all be seeing more of this come to fruition, how CDEP and all these different planning teams are kind of being remade. So that was CDEP. Any questions? All right. Then we move on from reports and discussion to the comment section of our agenda. Does anyone have any good news?
The tennis team went undefeated in its regular season.
That's fantastic, and there was, that was one of my good newses. They have, there was a terrific article about the tennis team in the Poughkeepsie Journal, and so that was, that was good, very good. I, oh, Mark?
Yeah, I'll just report that there were two really great band concerts, both the high school band and middle school band had concerts last week, and they were really great and well-attended as well.
Very good. Excellent. And I'd like to report that I attended the event about Madagascar that was held a couple weeks ago with the sixth and seventh grade. So Dr. Patricia Wright from SUNY Stony Brook, who's been kind of spearheading that with the sixth grade, came and spoke in the auditorium with the sixth grade, and the seventh grade was working in the gym with a theater group from the city that has done some work with children in Madagascar, and then after a certain amount of time, they switched, and it was fantastic. It was just fantastic. I first have to say that our kids were fantastic. They were so enthusiastic. I mean, you just walk in, they were just like great with Patricia Wright. She was very interactive, very appropriate with them for their age in terms of how she was talking with them, and they were very responsive. It was very lively. She is, has been, is featured in an IMAX film that's going to come out that's narrated by Morgan Freeman, of course. He narrates all these things, and so she showed some of it and talked about how they filmed in Madagascar, and she showed pictures of her work in Madagascar, and the kids asked questions, and they clearly had been prepared. I think that in the group I was when they asked good questions. And the theater group does some really interesting work with kids in, so it's part of this, I can't say the name of the town.
Ramaphana.
Thank you. And the links, Ramaphana and Rhinebeck, the R villages sort of link, and they showed a film of their work with children in that village, and then these actors worked with groups of the seventh graders to take video of them saying hello, and they were really expressive, had to, you know, use their whole body to say hello to these kids in Ramaphana. And it was really just a fantastic example of, it was a blend of, because, you know, Dr. Wright is a primatologist of science and global awareness, theater, using technology, really, you know, there's a social justice component to it because the theater group works on helping kids in poorer communities to develop skills so they can progress, and it was just really, in a couple of hours, a fantastic array of issues that were, and it was just a first step, you know. I think one of the, one of the actors said it really nicely when he said, it's sort of like, there's a lot going on, so this is like us going, like, you know, you run into someone, you meet them, and you put out your hand, and you shake your hand, like, that's what we're doing. We're just like shaking hands now, so we'll see what happens after that, which, so I thought that was a wonderful thing. I'm sure John Kemenzer will tell us more about it.
Yeah, I think the intent to try to make this part of the middle school culture is to actually build a half-day into the schedule in the fall, like they have that three-year program that they, you know, Art is in Action and Health and Wellness, and I think a career component that they do each year. I think the intent is to have a Madagascar activity, some aspect or multiple aspects of that every fall, so it becomes part of the middle school culture, and then teachers can build lessons around it and use it, because it's, there are so many possibilities for using that area of the world for lessons in art, science, theater, singing, I mean, it's so much.
So much, right. Yeah, and while there, it's just another example as well, where there is some information, and there's even a link on our website to Madagascar, and there's some, but I think we could be presenting that in a way, because it's really a very unique thing for our school district to offer students, and, you know, it'd be nice to be able to share that more widely. So that was my good news. I also do want to just point out something that I notice every time I'm here, which is the artwork that is on display in this library, and our students do just a great job, unfortunately, we don't have a camera person to actually... job, unfortunately, we don't have a camera person to actually move the camera so you can see what I'm talking about, but we have fantastic artwork, and I know it's been discussed at other times, people have had the idea of having students come and talk to us about pieces of things that they're doing in their classrooms, and it just strikes me as this is something that's here and changed frequently and always really interesting, and I just want to highlight that. Any other good news? Okay, then we'll move on to old business. Does anyone have anything for old business?
Just a question. Reading the minutes from last time reminded me that you went to the Chamber breakfast?
Oh, yeah, right. We did.
Yes, and they wrote a very nice article and didn't even mention Deirdre that she spoke.
Oh, thank you.
I felt bad about that.
I didn't even see the article.
Yeah. I won't mention the paper, so...
Wow.
But, but I was featured.
I guess you can do that.
And our Senator Terry Gibson spoke as well, but, yeah, it was, it was a good opportunity. You know, Deirdre did a great job of really laying...
You're welcome.
I'd have written the article. But no, seriously, Deirdre did a great job of kind of putting out the, the big-picture vision of our school district and the kinds of things we're trying to do, and then I had the opportunity to kind of play off that and talk about fun things like Common Core and that kind of thing. So, and then Senator Gibson talked about his legislation to change the school funding to do, you know, more of a, an income tax-based school funding than a property tax-based school funding, but it was, it really, it was interesting because it wound up being, all of the speakers were speaking about education from different angles, certainly, even Senator Gibson, he was talking about school funding, and so there was, there was kind of a theme, I don't know if it just happened or whether that was, that was intended, but it was, I thought, very good, a good opportunity for us to get out there and brag about our school district, so thank you for that.
And I will say that one of the things I did talk about, and I know it's been raised at this table, is that, and I think it is important to raise it with the Chamber of Commerce, is how to, you know, work together, and we have many examples of the local businesses supporting the schools and interacting with our schoolchildren, but thinking in a forward-thinking way about how to sustain this community as a livable community, and often, because Rhinebeck is a tourist destination, I think, you know, understandably, the Chamber looks at it through that lens, but I wanted to communicate to them things that we've raised around this table about how to, you know, support the community of people who live here, because the strength of this community will always be in the people who live here, and so I think that's a message we need to continue to try and communicate out there as more and more businesses oriented towards tourism, but, you know, we serve a very important function in keeping the community strong. So, I appreciated that Colleen Cook Chang does a terrific job and that she invited us to speak, this is the second year. Thanks for asking about that. Any other issues under old business, questions, reports? Okay, we have another opportunity for public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment? Okay, seeing none, then we move on to other, anything that doesn't fit into any of those other categories. All right, seeing none, and we'll move on to our action items, and that is again from your agenda that's at your place. Does anyone have anything to remove from the consent agenda? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent items?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the extension of the appointment of Geraldine Ely as a long-term substitute in the position of instrumental music teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School at the pleasure of the board effective June 30th, 2014 through June...
13th.
Oh, excuse me, June 13th, 2014 through June 20th, 2014, at the salary of Step 3 MA plus 8, $61,015 prorated in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Stephanie Calley, instrumental music teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the 1.0 FTE appointment of Gideon Moore as a long-term substitute in the position of social studies business computer teacher at Rhinebeck High School, Buckley Middle School at the pleasure of the board. Such extension to be effective May 14th, 2014 through June 24th, 2014, at a salary of MA plus 30 plus 30, Step 2, $63,927 prorated and otherwise in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
Second.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the extension of the appointment of Susan Van Black as a long-term substitute in the position of computer teacher at Buckley Middle School at the pleasure of the board effective May 14th, 2014 through June 19th, 2014, to be reimbursed at her hourly rate?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of poll inspectors and chairperson. Elise Ettencher, Cindy Ping, Regina Recchia, Stacy Vandenthorn, Christine Livace, Kathy Cassens, Laura Magley, Karen Murphy, Karen Cassius, Jane Hoffman, Debbie Hazelwood, Deb Hiley, Sue Waters, Linda Janow, Betty Mensch, I think that is, Marlene Dalum, Valerie Kilmer, Betsy Zubroff, and Susan Gospel, with additions, and to give the district clerk permission to fill additional positions as necessary.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of $26,192.90 from the Friends of the Whale Watch to defray expenses relating to the fifth-grade whale watch field trips to Cape Cod for two classes, Palmetier, Blas, and Stiversen on June 4th through 6th, 2014, and for two classes, Weston-Morrissey on June 11th through 13th, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
And by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2012-13 school year?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of a leave under the Family and Medical Leave Act for Donna Han effective May 10th, 2014 through June 26th, 2014?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Katherine Greco as a long-term substitute in the position of teaching assistant at the Rhinebeck High School effective April 22nd, 2014 through June 26th, 2014, at the pleasure of the board at the salary of $142.52 per diem, which is 50% of Step 1 MA plus 6, $57,006, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Donna Han, teaching assistant at the Rhinebeck High School.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of one bell kit and snare drum from Taylor Russell, a senior at Rhinebeck High School?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much to Taylor Russell. That was very generous and very thoughtful. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Rhinebeck crew team overnight trip to the National Scholastic Rowing Championships in Princeton, New Jersey on May 23rd and 24th, 2014, at no additional unbudgeted costs to the school district?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Of course, this was other good news we missed, so congratulations to, it's the girls' crew team, right? Yeah, very good. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes its president to execute a probationary term extension agreement along with the superintendent of schools regarding employee number 2789 as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I now have a motion to move into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. We're moving into executive session. Thank you.